Uh, how we got to this physical indicator dashboard? And then Tina's gonna come in and talk about the revenue streams that we have in our district. Several years ago, two districts in the state of Indiana had some significant financial issues. Muncie Schools and Gary. And the state asked the question, schools, why, why couldn't you anticipate a fiscal cliff? And why couldn't you tell your community? And so they came up with a dashboard of transparency. And in that dashboard, there were certain things that they wanted to make sure that the community knew about. And on the dashboard, you'll see, we're gonna talk about basic information, who we are as a district, our enrollment trends, our fund balances as reported last year at the end of December. So all twenty-four data is not annual. And then we're gonna talk about annual deficits and surplus. This was the one that was intended to, to send up red flags to the community and to the board specifically if something happened. How we spend our money regarding balances. And Tina's gonna talk about this one. If we had to give you three that are our favorite and really guide us, this one, this one, and this one. Those are gonna be the ones that tell us, district, are you good or are you in trouble? Here's the worst one of all of it's revenue type, cuz it goes through the different fund balances, but it, the key is very difficult to read and it doesn't make a lot of sense. We have an operating referendum and you'll see what's in that. And then if anybody wants to have a PDF of all these, it's this last one. So for us in our district, last school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we had four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one point three kids. Now you're saying, how in the world do you get a third of a kid? Well, here's how we get a third of a kid. Our, we've made a decision in our district to allow homeschool kids, the different kids to come from one period a day, two periods a day, three periods a day. Or in our case, we also partner with Simple Money. We take kids that are in homeschool or at long college, enroll with us, and we get a portion of their money, and then we get the TTD dollars as well. So when we come down to counting noses on that first Friday in Oc- in October first, we will sometimes see a point three or a point eight kid because of that reason. So last year, we had four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one kids on our fall ADM. And that's how we got revenue. When we talk about assessed value, and I know Debbie probably remembers just from the part board generating revenue from that thing, I don't know, that from, from the terms of here in the steady side. The AV is all of the property that we have, personal business and rental property in, in Dobson County that impact our students. So you could see, we have two billion plus a year ago. I will tell you that number is up again this year. I think it was about a nine percent, what was this year, two number? Two point two again. So that's where we are, that will continue to rise. This one right here is also where we get our referendum dollars. Now, it was capped at four percent. And what we have said is, ours, the way you read our referendum is twenty-three cents per one hundred dollars of your assessed value. Is how we go about getting ours. So that AV comes into play here. And this is the community during our last census, how many people were in here? And it was thirty-one thousand. The other thing statute says, if you read the statute, it says, the superintendent or designee can either give a written report or a presentation on these five factors. As, since this started back in the late teens, we have always given a presentation on our funding. I've not written it out. We'll reflect it in the minutes that's recorded and also as we, as we stream it live as well, people can see that as well. One of the things that people probably are surprised to hear about our district is that we're either flat enrollment or slightly declining. We're actually declining. If you go all the way back here, and one of the great things about this website, if you hover over one of the columns, you'll get to see the real-time data as it's presented in that column. So you could see back in twenty fifteen, sixteen, our fall in-person was five thousand and seventy-one kids. And remember, I just reported to you, it was at forty-eight, twenty-one. So that's the number of students that, um, so we've lost kids. And that trend continues throughout the journey. I will tell you also, in the spring, when we look at that ADM date, we always lose kids. Kids graduate mid-year. We don't capture kids back usually, like I said. So we're gonna always see a, a decline in the number of kids. I do believe though, now that we've instituted a virtual school, you'll actually see that. Shelby reported today, we have kids coming to us now. Uh, in that virtual thing that wanna pick up their, their credits to graduate and their seniors. And so you're gonna see that enrollment probably stabilize or go up, uh, from our mid-year graduates. Did you, how many mid-years does it, do they have this year? Did they tell you yet? I haven't heard. We usually have anywhere between forty-five and seventy. Kids will graduate mid-year with us. So you could go all the way back to twenty-three, twenty-four, and you could see in the spring, remember, our fall ADM was forty-eight, twenty-one, or in this one says forty-eight, eleven, thirty-four. And then here, fi- fifty-seven, fifty-one. So we lost another forty-seven kids. Fifty kids to that space, uh, of either graduating early or transferring to another school. This chart is a little bit ugly, cuz it also reflects when we had five funds in Indiana. General Fund, we had Capital Projects Fund, we had Transportation, we had Cafeteria, and Debt Service. We've loo- we've migrated to only three funds now. We have General Fund, we have Education Fund, we have Operation Fund, and we still have Debt Service. We cannot pay any Debt Service except for it pays our lease. It doesn't pay any people, it just pays our lease. Also, Circuit Breaker impacts Operations Fund, cuz that's our local property taxes that come in. Tina must make sure that we pay our mortgage. That is required tactfully. So when we talk about losing funds in operation, not necessarily lose them, we have to make sure that we have to pay our Debt Service. So that comes into play. So as you travel through here, you can see the different funds. Like this blue one is the Debt Service line. And how much we pay. So our mortgage in twenty-fourteen was almost seven million dollars. Fast forward to right now, in twenty-twenty-three, our mortgage is two point seven million. And we're gonna see that thing continue to fall off. If we get, if we could project out to twenty-twenty-eight, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a real fun mortgage burning party becau- or because the high school has paid off. That'll be great. One of the things you all are gonna have to decide during that time is what do we do with our tax rate? Right now, we have a board goal that says, our Debt Service rate will be seventy-four cents, plus or minus five cents. Right now, it's seventy-eight cents. So we're under that. There's a reason we did that. Eighty cent, eighty cents and above, you have to go to the community and do a referendum on any borrowing of money, on any bonds. If you keep between forty cents and eighty cents, you do petition or monstrance, which is what we've cho- chosen to do. And you're gonna hear all about those fund, uh, structures coming up in our February retreat, when we have our financial partners with us. But that was a purposeful decision for us. Because in that petition or monstance, if the community didn't like what we were gonna do, they could come tell you about it. And in a thirty-day period, they could collect signatures and you all could decide, yea or nay to go for it. And then that would go to referen- if they got enough signatures, if not, then you all decided to move forward with it. That was a decision we made as we look at the fund balances here. In addition, you'll notice like this federal fund is, is upside down a little bit. How can that be? It's a reimbursement fund. So whenever Brooke spends Title One dollars, we have to wait until we pay that. And then we ask for that money back in reimbursements. So therefore, you could see, it's not always in real time. So it might look like, oh my goodness, we're upside down. Well, we're not. It's just how it appears in this space. And here are our state funds that we have. And when we do the budget and budget workshop and all those different things, you all will get this information as you travel forward in real time, and Tina. And now I'm gonna let Tina talk about, we'll go to the annual deficit and surplus. So this one, uh, gives us a quick, quick look at expenditures versus, uh, revenue in that space. So you can see here, back in twenty-fourteen again, once you hover over that, you get to see the deficit or surplus. And once again, when you're looking at that, you're looking at, there's federal funds sometimes that are not allocated, that we've already paid for. Or in some cases, we didn't, we didn't have to, to, uh, go into any loss to that. So Tina's gonna come back and talk about the next two fund areas, um, in regard to our Debt Service and Surplus.
Yeah, so in, in twenty-three, it looks like, um, the blue, blue bar is expenditure, green bar is revenue. So it looks like we, um, spent more than we brought in, right? That is because we have, um, purposely tried to spend down the referendum fund balance over the last couple of years. You know, we won the campaign in nineteen and then started drawing those funds in twenty. But it took us a while to kinda implement the right plan. You know, we took our time and we were very strategic about what we wanted to do with that money. So over the course of time, we kind of built up a little savings in that account. Knowing that, uh, we wanna spend that down before we go out for a re-campaign. So that was a little bit of it. It was mostly, there was also a couple million, um, spent in, uh, Geo Bond Funds. So we had borrowed, I think, three million dollars to do some deferred maintenance. That goes into one of our, um, revenue accounts. And, um, so that was put down. So it was like, we, we, we over, what do you call that? When you spend more than what you made, you overexpend yourself, but that's why.
This is one of the things that they do happen, you know? They don't throw up, they don't off. And if we know it, we don't have to. People think that's playing with themselves. And that, that is a big problem, that is why. And you, you think that's, you know? And then, uh, what do you think about this? All of this, uh, he's the, he's like, yeah, so. And then, uh, we'll look at it. Your teacher?
Oh, true, Atlanta, Atlanta.
He is, uh, he's very, very near. He is the, uh, executive chief of, I mean, he's, he's, he's. So Pete Miller actually called back in the morning, called, hey, you wanna talk about this? I said, no, here, look, I mean, here's why this is. Okay, that's.
Yep, where, yeah, you just, you can just stand right here and.
I find this graph a little more useful than the other ones. Um, this is uh fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So we're saving as a specific uh percentage of expenditures. We're pretty consistent the last couple of years. And I went ahead and calculated for twenty-four and we're around twenty-eight point three. So um this kinda just gives us a snapshot of financial health, I feel like. Um, so our, our target will be kinda staying in that range. Oh, okay. Revenue by type, um, this just shows where our funding comes from, you know, mostly from state and local property taxes. A little bit from the federal government. Um, still have extra dollars on the books even though we ended last year. Um, so that one isn't as informative as, as the other ones are. And then operating referendum, this just shows um our increase in referendum dollars over the last few years. And that's because of the increases in assessed value. Um, but as Dr. C said, um, they have put a cap on that, a three percent cap. Um, the last two years, that's set to expire, but I would imagine legislation, I guess it just depends. They blow things up or they kinda stay steady?
One of the things that legislators are concerned about, if you look at how these are um, states are doing. And you said twenty-three percent for one hundred dollars, twenty percent down. Well, when AD goes up, that twenty-three cents goes up, right? So you can see when you first started, how much you captured the money. To five point six million, there was like four point three, you need one point three during the death by the majority of students. One of the good things about the referendum is everybody knows. And people think, well, what do you mean by that? Well, the tip is, don't tip when we talk about tipping. However, in this phase, they have to do it. The major decisions have been made, if they're in, so if they're a business, they participate inside of that decision. So that's one of the good things. Uh, so when we were talking about the referendum, most people, they just don't know K Y B. We wouldn't talk to them about our revenue. However, they don't go involved, they don't listen. So this one is a big one. I do think legislators are gonna change this place. I think what you're gonna see in the future. One, make the way of referendum all the way. When you talk to Jeff Thomas, he raises the house. He doesn't like that some schools could win a referendum in Pennsylvania. You know, like, so one option would be the school, your way of going, or. Have the money be written so that the school tells exactly how much money you need. And no matter what happens with AD, you don't want to be bad enough. So the market, if you say AD four point three million, you would never capture more than four point three million. We can ask the supply to bring it down. We have actually written it down. We're now at like twenty-one percent. One of the, one of the stressors between circuit breaker laws is even if our rate goes down. You may, you may see an increase in the property tax because the other entities fill that bucket back up. That's the other thing Jeff Thomas does not like. He doesn't feel like that's a good system when you say, hey, school rate just went down. But yet your property tax just went up. So what's that look like? So those are some things that they're looking at in terms of the referendum side of life for us, with the school. Overall, I would say we are a very healthy district, thanks to the referendum. One of the things, though, that we talked about today, we need to pick that up.
Yeah?
We met with the out of the town, we talked today, and he and I get very similar expectations, and we agree. When you look at this number of over five thousand, down to this level, there's a forty-seven hundred. One would think that you would have left to do that, if that number five is thirty by then. You would have gone two hundred. And I think you probably have left to, we do not. We've actually grown. But one of the things that we're talking about is what, what's that right number to use? If you're five thousand, you have two hundred to use. You have forty-eight hundred. You now have three hundred and twenty-one. Is that the right number? Or it should be something different. Now, I will tell you, twenty-two, we also grow. And we, we all are thirty. Why have to give them two to use, and then they use two to use? What number should be? I think our total actually has to be around two thirty, somewhere around two thirty.
Somewhere around that.
About that, about two thirty, it's around, people have been turned by the new people depending, you know, on that. So what could that be? And that's one of the things that we're looking at over the next several months, if you can. Our number actually, too, will go back up. We're at forty-nine, forty-one. So we're doing about a hundred kids. Where's a hundred kids going? We anticipate about thirty to fifty, we're gonna have a lot of children, and we. We would keep that up, Jeff. We believe that it will probably go up again to about two hundred, about two hundred. We know that in our community, there are still over a hundred kids that choose virtual somewhere else. And that question, you gotta be virtual, why would you come down? Because if I say, oh, you still take, take tests, so if you're choosing communities out there to hide all the violence. You gotta drive there to make the test. Why not just come and start up? And we take each phase, we allow, if you go virtual and you wanna still be in higher, you wanna be up football team, we still allow it. High school, we don't because I could take games and tell them that we're still up. So we believe that number will go up. Well, in that revenue, we get eighty-five percent of a fourth seat. So even though our number's four, forty-nine, twenty-one, we get eighty-five percent uh, kids in virtual. So those are some dynamics that we're talking about, thinking about for us. That is D U A. Anyone standing in can go here and look at this. If you're ever bored at night and you wanna wake up and think, huh. What's everybody else doing? Let me show you what that looks like. Because when you start thinking about schools, and we have a peer group. Let's see here. And Plainfield's in our peer group. So let's, let's look, you know, if we look at some of the data for them. So they're at fifty-six, twenty. In two thousand nine, we had fourteen million. A lot of their percentage is reduced. You can see their net assessed value, they sold for a billion dollars more than we did. They built their high school, the exact same type of school, right? Their circuit breaker law is the state's, we owe, the state's, the federal's, the personal, air force. And you can see that population is only two thousand, you know, you're driving really good by that, and coming away. But one of the things, we go back to that bit, the chart that we really like. And you think about, well, okay, schools basically have the same expenditures. So you could see, you know, where they're at twenty-two and we were at twenty-eight. And then went to nineteen, nineteen, and they've kinda trended up here, nice little smiley face the last few years, for whatever reason, they made that decision. So they're probably in pretty good health. So we look at our neighbors over here to the west. They're over ten thousand kids now, but they're at ninety-six hundred. Here's their net assessed value, remember ours is two, two billion, theirs is three point eight, almost double us. And they almost double us in size. So, okay, they're, we know that they're bigger than we are. And you go over here and look at that chart that Tina and I really like, and look at their number, eleven. Eleven. So you're sitting thinking, Tina, you told me twenty-eight and you like that number. They have eleven and they probably like that number. So how is that? That is a really good question. I can't answer that. But this is also what D U A can't answer either. How can a school district, like Franklin Schools, have a twenty-eight percent or a thirty percent? And then another school district close by have this number? And I, I don't, I don't, some of it is how they all, how they figure out where they're gonna spend their money, what they're gonna do with their money. But that is something that, if you're ever bored, you can go through and we can give you our list of who we, who we look like. And see, how do we compare to them in that space? And that was the intent. That was the intent when the state did this, was to allow conversations to take place, both at board level. And our level, to see if we can make sure that we're having, we're most efficient. I will tell you, for our five guiding principles of systemic improvement, we have really tried hard. To make the best decisions fiscally for us in our, in our space. Our, our circuit breaker laws, which I wish they'd report that out, because that'd be really interesting to see, circuit breaker laws by school by year. We're over fifty million dollars lost revenue. Now, that just means that once we got to the one, two, three cap, we just didn't collect that money. So. Did we lose it? It's relative, right? But that's what we would say. We look to our friends to the north and Greenwood. They've lost about a hundred thousand in the same amount of period. You're sort of thinking, how in the world would that happen? What has to do with their A V and what's going on? But it, so when you're talking about, they've only lost that much money. Well, when they do operations or different things, it, it has a different impact than when we do it. So those are some of the things that, that we look at as well. Anything else?
I would just, does everybody know what circuit breaker is? No, I think it's, we, we use faculty, we talk today, what's that, that you gotta talk about, circuit breaker?
It, it's the money we lose from the tax cap, so. Yep, yep. I don't know why they call it circuit breaker, but that was a foreign term to me when I came in as well. Um, it sounds metaphorical.
It is. So what you say, so if you own a business, if a home owner, you love it, right? Your house is worth three hundred thousand dollars, or whatever it is, you're only gonna spend. You know, three thousand dollars, that, you have, of all you, libraries, schools. And let's say that when you add school tax, library tax, county tax, fire, city, you need thirty-eight hundred dollars, eight hundred dollar debt. Right? All of that is still a funny, that eight hundred dollars, if it goes away, that's when you start to count how much money you need to use. As a school district, we make up a lot of it out of the gap. And that's why we need to be, because we have to buy in here sometimes. But we have to pay money, right? Just because we make up a lot of half of all the others combined by our own, turn the half to. So that's why we do this, we do this. We don't probably have a lot of free time, if you, if you know, you pay the taxes. And see, to that, if you don't have any value, uh, free value, you're looking for all of the other, the million dollar cases. You go with nine thousand dollars, you would be, or you'd be, uh, circuit breaker falling. Now, you're gonna hear from our, our partners, uh, in the center, where now that A V is broken out, how many, most, most people think it's a one percent. And that's especially during the year. Now, out in the county cities, we, we need them, because they're a bit lower like a cent. So we're, we're probably also getting, most of that probably sets the limit. And they are capped, they are always, over seventy years, right?